Okay, basically, the roll call. Would you like to give that roll call, Rhonda, so we?
I think you'll need to read your statement first.
Okay.
Emergency statement.
I can do that. As Chair of the Wannacunan School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with that emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone and additional access by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the Wannacunan School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting dialing the following phone number: (646) 876-9923. And the webinar ID is (912) 3929-9528, or by clicking the following website, and that Providing public notice of this necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously had given notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the website of www.sau21.org. Also under C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's a problem with access. And if you have a problem, call this number (603) 926-8992, extension 103, or email Attending the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call. Thank you, and we'll now take the roll call.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes, present and family in and out.
Henry Marsh.
Present and family in and out.
Leslie LaFond.
Present, family downstairs.
Mike Rabideau.
Present, one other person in the room.
And Tony Delano.
Present and family in and out.
I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. Earlier, we met with our student body president, who was a member of the Wannacunan School Board as a student, and I'd like to introduce Tyler Hughes. Tyler's waving, and thank you again for being at our meetings.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and we are ready for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are we ready?
Yep.
Did we have a flag?
I didn't know you wanted one. I apologize. I'll make sure it's in there next time.
Okay, okay. If everyone would stand, we'd just give the pledge, please. Thank you. Okay.
My allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under invisible.
With liberty and justice. Thank you. Hope everyone has read the minutes over December 16th meeting, and is there a motion to accept the minutes? Any errors or?
Yep. To accept the December 16th meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Leslie LaFond.
Yes.
Mike Rabideau.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
Great.
I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. The next item on the... Pardon?
Sorry, I have the vote recorded.
Well, thank you. The next item is continuing business, and that's policies. Second read, I hope everyone has read them, and in discussions with Dr. Kellyon earlier, I discussed the issue of public comment, and within that, the school board can extend the time for public comment if the board so desires, and so I'm in favor with this policy read. Anyone else?
Is that a motion, Henry?
Pardon? Would like... I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read and adoption of the policies as listed, and also the withdrawals of policies GBAA, JBAA, GBGAA, and JLCCA. Thanks.
I hope everyone read those, the deletions. I'm sorry. Rhonda, can we have a roll call?
Can I get a second to the motion? Heidi Terrasina.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Leslie LaFond.
Yes.
Mike Rabideau.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. The next, I am... We've been anxiously awaiting this for quite a while, and within our last meeting, the motion was made and was seconded and voted on that Mr. McGowan, Principal of Wannacunan High School, would be an update of the in-school, excuse me, in-person school plan, and Mr. McGowan, are you ready?
I am ready, but before I begin, and Tyler's with us tonight, typically on the agenda we have a Wannacunan Pride where Tyler could provide the student voice as far as how things are going, so if it's okay with you, I would ask Tyler just to give an update as far as how things are going at the school from a student level, and then I can go give my presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and I just wanted to say too that I will stay on for a little while, so if anyone has any questions, hopefully I can answer. In terms of from my perspective, you know, I think there's a transition period for everything. I think we're nearing the end of that transition period. Students that I've spoken to are excited to be back in school. They are, I mean, some people were, you know, a little nervous at the start, but I think we've got that worked out. You know, I was really pleasantly surprised by a few things. I was pleasantly surprised by the general safety protocols and how they were followed. I think they were followed really diligently by the students, and that includes the mask wearing, the social distancing, the hand sanitizing. I was really impressed. I thought the students stepped up to the plate well with that in terms of, you know, other items in terms of... Thank you. You know, I think the students are really happy to be back in the building, and it showed in, you know, people's faces, in their work, and their questions in class, in just their general attitudes. And so, yeah, that's pretty much how it's been from my perspective, which is obviously only one person of the many, many that are going back. I know people who are in court as well are really excited to be continuing with that. So that's from my perspective. I'll let Mr. McGowan give the real technical stuff, but...
Okay. If I could just interject here, Tyler, you're editor of the Wannacronicle.
I am.
Okay. Could you also get in touch with the SAU office and get the addresses of all the school board members in SAU 21? It's been a tradition that the Chronicle was sent out to all the members, so they know what's going on at the high school, because you guys do a great job, and we want to promote this high school, and I want to thank you. Thank you.
We will make that happen. We've been doing less print editions, but I encourage you to check us out online at wannacronicle.com to tell us all our stories up there, so.
Thank you.
So as Tyler said, I mean, things are going very well, and again, I want to thank the students. They've been doing a great job, you know, pickup patrol, things like that. Everything's going well. We can get the students into the building very quickly in the morning, so overall, it is a transition. This is day seven, and for some of us, I think it seems like day 70, but we can continue working, make improvements as we see. Tonight, I will provide an update as far as what the next steps would be for us to return. You know, currently, we have the hybrid model, but we have two cohorts, so what are the next steps to get all the students into the building? So, do I have screen sharing rights? Let me do this, and we'll go into the presentation. That was a quick presentation. Okay, everybody says my screen, is we all set? Okay. So again, thank you for allowing me to present our next steps as we move forward. And our goal, as it has been, is to, you know, reopen fully as safely and quickly as possible. We're going to take a look at the in-school transmission and spread. I want to make sure that the students and staff are safe throughout the process, and we want to make sure that we continue to provide the educational opportunities for all students. One of the considerations and planning that we're looking at, excuse me, the learning model, we would have two options. In-person, all students would be in the building five days a week. Currently, we have the two cohorts, A through L and M through Z, and those students are in two days a week, and they alternate throughout the week. We will still maintain the A/B scheduling, so we will have three classes per day, and the reason for that is we do know that some students will want to stay remote. Going to a six-period per day to support those remote students would be very difficult for those students. Remote, students would be learning at home, as they are now, fully remote, and students will be able to participate, you know, in the classes synchronously, and also based on the daily lessons, there may be some independent time. So it's going to be similar to what we're doing now, except they would be remote every day, and the persons coming in, and the students coming into the building would be in the building every day. What are some of the decision points? So currently, the plan would be to maintain the six-foot spacing in the classroom, so students would be spaced, desks would be spaced six feet apart, and we've gone through and we've calculated the capacity for all those rooms, though the configuration is based on the room size and different configurations. We have 90 classrooms. Based on the classroom size, the range ranges, it ranges from eight students to 24 students. And the other thing we need to take a look at is the dining hall capacity. How many students could we serve at one time in the dining hall? Currently, there's 35 tables spaced six feet apart. We possibly could put a few more tables, but it's probably, we probably couldn't exceed 40 tables. We have plexiglass dividers on all the tables that restricts the number of students sitting at each table to four students at the table, and again, if we maintain the 35, it's going to be 140 students per lunch, so we can serve between 140, 100 students, between 140 and 160 students per lunch safely, so that would require us to go to four lunches. Currently, we're at three lunches. We would have to implement four lunches. So as we look to see how many students we could handle, we looked at the previous survey results, and they were pretty consistent. We had two of them on December 1st and December 23rd, and both those surveys, on average, showed that 75% of the students wanted to return in person, and 25% wanted to remain remote. Now, the interesting thing about these results is that it varied from grade level, even though 75 was the average across all grades. The freshman class, grade nine, 83%, 83% to 85% of those students wanted to return, 79% for grade 10, it was 69 for grade 11, and 72 for grade 12. So again, we looked at 75% as an average, but we do know that it fluctuates between each grade level. Currently, with the hybrid model that we have in place, we have the two cohorts broken up alphabetically, A through L, M through Z, and it's not quite 50/50, it's 53% of the students are A through L, and 40% of the students are M through Z, but we have about 400 students per day. We also looked at currently with the students in the building, what are their classes that we have to relocate because we could not accommodate the students based on the six-foot spacing. So on paper, we had about 14 classrooms. In reality, I think we had to move three classrooms, because again, even though that 53%, 47%, not all students returned in person, so we did have to relocate some classrooms to accommodate the six-foot spacing. So to go to full in-person, we took a look at, okay, since the results showed 75%, what does that look like? So we took a look at all classes throughout the day, and then across the board, just reduced everything by 75%. Based on that, we would have to relocate 42 classrooms throughout the day to maintain the six-foot spacing, and that range from different numbers based on the different blocks. So the number of classrooms we had to relocate, for example, on one block, it could be 11 rooms that we'd have to move, and another block, it could be 17. So the range was 11 to 17, and looking at the number of classrooms, we believe that we do have the potential to reallocate rooms based on if the projections of students returning would be 75%. And again, there's a range, and this is on paper. I do know that some classes, all the students are returning, so that could provide some challenges as we move ahead. Then we looked at, okay, could I have more students come into the building? So we looked at 85%, and if 85% of the students wanted to return, we'd have to relocate 57 classrooms throughout the day, and that would be anywhere from 18 to 26 rooms per period. This would create a major disruption to relocate all those rooms. So, you know, again, we could probably handle, you know, about 75% of the students returning based on survey results. This chart shows, you know, the number of rooms that we have for a classroom capacity, and this is based on the six-foot spacing. So for example, we have four rooms that can accommodate eight students. The major, the majority, not the majority, but the largest number of rooms that we have that could maintain 16 students, we have 26 of those rooms. Those are located in the B and C wing, and some of those are the science classes. But as we increase in the number of students for classroom capacity, those numbers decrease. As you take a look at the numbers above 16, there's fewer and fewer rooms for us to move students, so that impacts the number of rooms that we can use as we move. The schedule, again, we would maintain the A/B schedule. It would go from 7:30 to 2:30, as we are now. We would still hold the office hours daily. Teachers and students would be in every day. We would take attendance daily for students in person for those remote. Buses would leave at the end of the schedule block five or six prior to office hours, but we'd also have a late bus. We still maintain the schedule for SST students, and as I said, we still maintain the three blocks per day. We also still maintain Warrior Block for additional support during the day. So while it's still a three-block schedule, it's modified a little bit to accommodate the four lunches. You know, we'd still have two blocks in the morning, based on the A-day, the red day or the blue day, so we'd have, for example, on the red day, blocks three and four, classes would still be 75 minutes. We would have Warrior Block, and then we would have the four lunches scheduled during 5A or 6, during block five or six. This is similar to what we have done in a normal year, except, you know, in a typical year, the lunch period is block five, and we have three lunches. So parents and students may remember that, you know, we had 5A, 5B, and 5C based on the schedule. Lunches would be 25 minutes in length. Again, the last class would end at 1:30, and then we would have office hours until 2:30. And another reason to maintain, you know, the schedule here, if we do have to pivot back to either the hybrid model or the remote model, we still have the three periods, and we maintain that consistency. The proposed timeline would be to remain in the current hybrid model for the remainder of trimester two, and then begin the full in-person trimester three. But in order to do that, we would have to survey all students, and that would be mid-February to the end of February, to see how many students will want to return in person every day or remain remote for trimester three. Unlike now, that, well, we do have some flexibility that students have been able to change based on, you know, their choice, and we have had students that have chose, chose hybrid in person initially, they've gone to remote. We've also had students that initially chose remote, they've come back in person. Based on this model, because, you know, the class sizes would be impacted by the number of students, families and students would have to commit for the entire trimester three based on their decision. We would review those results and potential full return if 75% or less of the student body wanted to come back in person. If that number was much higher, we would have to maintain the hybrid model, because based on the current conditions that we're looking at, we cannot have more than that number of students in the building. And the other thing, as we, you know, move towards the end of the year, you know, staff vaccinations are scheduled to start in March, so that may impact results and provide some flexibility. At the same time, I'm not going to count on that to make my decision right now, but that's something that we have to look at as we move ahead. That's the end of the presentation. Again, thank you for the students, thank you to the staff, thank you for the school board, and thank you for the community. You know, we're moving forward. There is light at the end of this pandemic tunnel, and we still need to be flexible for a few more months and work together, and I know we can do that. So I will open up for any questions at this time.
Hey, if you have a question, if you just raise your hand, and Rhonda will bring you
I do see a hand raised. The name says Jennifer Waddell. Ms. Waddell, we're going to grant you permission to speak. We just need you to state your name, your address and affiliation with the school, and then you can ask your question. You will need to unmute yourself. Ms. Waddell, we've given you permission to speak, but you seem to have yourself muted. I've requested to unmute her, and I've, there she goes.
Hello? Sorry. I apologize. I'm on my phone in the car. It's Jennifer Waddell, 33 Vlano Island, North Hampton, New Hampshire. I want to thank Mr. McGowan for bringing this plan forward. Definitely, us parents appreciate it. One thing I wondered is, had you thought about bringing back the tents like we had in the fall, especially given try three, the weather would be warmer, and also if you get over 75% of the students wanting to come back, recognize the challenge, but would you even consider like hard choices, like maybe seniors come back because it's their last chance, you know, to be able to be in the school environment before heading off to college? I just want to make sure we're thinking creatively different ways before we just say it can't happen if we get like 80%. So whether that's tents, the gym, I don't know. I just, I just hope that we can continue to push, so it's just not a no.
I don't see any other hands being raised at this time.
I don't believe we have to approve this, because it's, it's an ongoing process. I want to thank Mr. McGowan for this, and I'm hearing no comments, that it sounds great, and is there any other board member that would like to just address? I mean, there was a lot of work in the last month to put this together with Mr. McGowan and his staff.
I would love to go.
Go ahead, Heidi. You're on.
So, a couple of questions. The first is, when you talk about relocating the teachers' classrooms, so just more specifically, are they moving classrooms just for that block, or is this a brand-new classroom for them to stay in for the rest of the year?
That would just be for the specific block.
Okay, and?
It would be for that specific block, but that would be for the rest of the year. So for example, if I had to move a class block two, that would be the class block two every single day for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you. And do the teachers have access to carts or anything to help them move all of their materials back and forth? I'm just curious how that will affect the teacher's ability to bring their proper tools and everything with them.
Yeah, we would provide those resources of what we need, so that's why we'd have to, you know, once we get the results back, we would, you know, we would be as creative as possible, going back to the previous comment, and try to accommodate everybody, so that's why it's going to be critical based on the survey results, you know, mid-February, that we go through that specifically and identify those classrooms, because it may vary from different grade levels, because different percentages of students may want to return based on the grade level. So, you know, it's going to be key as we move ahead, and we'll do more work even now between now and then, as far as those survey results, to say, okay, which rooms typically would we be looking to relocate? I mean, I've, we've got that information now just based on those numbers.
Thank you.
I think Tony was next.
Yes, thank you, Henry. Just a couple of random questions about this. Mr. McGowan, what is the, you may have said this, what is the current percentage of students who are going to the school now for in-person?
On any, right now, we have about 70%.
70.
70%. That's based on, we can identify which students have identified themselves as remote, so we can keep track of the remote learners. So right now, it's about 30% remote, 70%.
Okay, so we're below that 75% right now. I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask anyway. Is there any reason why we couldn't get them in sooner, rather than, I don't know when try three starts, but it seems like it's a long way away, but maybe it's not?
It's not, and again, it's, that's why I mentioned, it seems like, you know, we've been doing this for a while. It's not, and again, it's, that's why I mentioned it seems like, you know, we've been doing this for a while, but this is day seven. The rotation that we're, that we're looking at now is a 20-day cycle for the rotation. So at the end of this 20-day cycle, it's February 9th. Again, we've gone through a lot of changes and teachers are just finding their routine. And I don't have enough time, you know, again, that was based on the results now. If people know that we want to come back in person, that number may increase. So, you know, for us to go out and do another survey and get everything in place, it would be a little bit difficult. You know, if I maintain that 20-day cycle at the February 9th, the next cycle ends would be March 10th, which is the week prior to the exams. So, you know, we've got a new schedule that occurs, you know, some students switch classes trimester three. So as far as trying to do everything now that we have some data, but we don't have the true data because I know families are still considering the options based on the experience that their son or daughter has had and or their friends. And the other thing that we're concerned about is that we do have February vacation coming up in the middle of that. So our family's going to travel and do we have to look out for a potential, you know, surge after that travel, after vacation? So we're looking at all those, all those factors as far as what makes the most sense as far as a clean transition.
Okay, thank you. May I ask another question? Is there, I don't know the current state of affairs as far as vaccinations go, but is there, is there any threshold that would allow us to decrease the six-foot spacing and give us some relief on the classrooms and the 75% and all that? Or is that just still too far in the future? Do we, do we know anything about that?
He is still too far in the future just based on what I see going on now. And I'm going to let Caroline add to some of that based on what, you know, what the research and some of the guidance that we've received.
Happy to speak to that a little bit. There is some guidance that suggests that the youngest students, grades pre-K through four, if remote, remote instruction is the only option, that schools can look at three feet. But six feet is still the recommendation across the board for, for adults and for students age 10 and up. So that protocol is, is still in place. And then as far as vaccinations, we do have staff who have had at least the first, if not two vaccines. All our school nurses have had at least the first one. They're also allowing speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists and physical therapists, which we employ because they are also, they have a, they have a medical license. So they're allowed in the first phase in New Hampshire. However, it still remains true that educators are in the second phase. So that is between March and May. And regardless of which vaccine you receive, you probably have heard you, you need two shots with at least three weeks in between and then two weeks following the second shot to be considered fully vaccinated. So as far as herd immunity, at this time, they don't have a date for that to relax that, that protocol for this school year.
Thank you. That's very helpful to play all that out.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thank, very good. Thank you for the plan. It's excellent. Appreciate the work that you've done on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anyone, oh, we got Mike coming in, sure.
Phil, just want to give you kudos. Obviously, we've all seen the emails that are coming in now and the parents are much happier. The students are much happier. I've heard feedback from the students and I think Tyler can sort of back that. And, you know, it's, it's an uphill progress. It's a progressive thing and because of the increase in COVID, well, you know, the whole thing, it's, it's in such flux. But the, the community does appreciate what, what we've done and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll just say ditto to that. I'll be quiet tonight.
Okay, thank you, Leslie, for summing it up. Okay, if we could move on, I think Dave Hobbs, are you ready with the superintendent search? Would that be Dave?
Yep, that's me. Well, since, since we were so successful in finding an interim superintendent, we decided to do the whole thing over again, looking for a permanent superintendent. We sent out emails last week to both staff and community members, parents, looking for volunteers. And I got to say publicly, I was just astounded by the amount of interest. We had over 50 volunteers between staff and parents that stepped forward and wanted to contribute to this. So it made our job a little difficult in terms of selection. But we worked with the Brian Group, the consultant, and we got it down to a core committee. We're actually going to be engaging in an organizational meeting with that committee on the 27th of January, just to kind of get things started. Just a couple of quick highlights. First of all, the Bennett County representative, the board representative is Tony. Thank you again, Tony, for doing it. And I got, Tyler's still here, right? Yeah. I got to give a shout out to Tyler because he proactively contacted us about getting a student rep involved. And I look forward to getting student voice into the committee as well. So anyways, we're, we're moving forward with a committee of 16. And of course, really, January and February are going to be more. We're going to have the big joint board meeting. We're going to talk about what we want, characteristics of a superintendent, job description. And then obviously we'll move into March where we're really starting to do some outreach and advertising of the position. And according to the timeline they sent us, that wraps us up or at least pulls candidates in for longer interviews in April. So that's what the timeframe looks like right now. And I'll just plan on giving regular reports in terms of where we are and also sending all staff emails as, as this process unfolds.
Great, thank you, David. And that follows through the timeline from the consulting firm, is it?
Correct. That's, that's the way they, they presented it in their initial pitch. I would assume there's going to be some variability in there, but we're trying to keep to it.
Great. Thank you. Any board member have a question for Dr. Hobbs? Tyler, any questions or? I see a very pensive sitting there. No, no, okay. So I'm sorry. Okay, moving on, we're looking at the finance report. We all received that report and our business manager is just inundated with a number of meetings and meetings and meetings on the budget. And I want to thank, thank Tony for being on, on that budget committee and that was passed. And then we'll have our, let's see, Dr. Kellian, when is our, our meetings for the budget?
So you have a, the deliberative is on February 4th.
Okay, and that's an in-person deliberative. The reason being is that the deliberative people have to be present to vote. So it cannot be done by Zoom or any other electronic means. And many of you that are involved in town activities the same way. They have to be in person to, to vote. Thank you, Dr. Kellian. Any questions on the deliberative or? Usually the deliberative session lasts about eight to nine minutes. So don't plan on a long evening. Okay, thank you. And moving on, we do have under new business. Mr. McGowan, would you like to go over those donations because we have several?
Yes, thank you. We have three donation, donations this evening. The first one is the Hampton Community Coalition. It's the hygiene project. Received $235 and that is for gift cards that we receive for distribution during the holiday season for students. We also received a $393 donation from Unitel for our student activities and students in need. And then the one donation that does require a vote from the school board, we received $1,000 from the Michael John and Eric Ryan Rush Foundation for Children. And that's for the Best Buddies Program. So that's a great program for the students. So again, all these donations are greatly appreciated and we thank the donors.
Okay, Leslie, would you like to make a, a motion?
I was just going to say I'll take a motion to accept the donation of $1,000 to the, for the, for the Best Buddies Program from the Michael John and Eric Ryan Rush Foundation for Children along with the others.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay, roll call.
Amy Terrasina?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFong?
Yes.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
And Tony Delano?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Okay. There is a sad note here. Under new business, our well-respected board member from Seabrook has announced a resignation. And he's also been the chairman of the SAU and the chairman of Seabrook School Board. And Mike, we're going to miss you. Is there something you'd like to say?
Well, wait a minute.
Lost the words.
No, no, we have to accept it, in which case I say no, so therefore, on to next, move on.
Nice, nice. Actually, I'd like to thank the Seabrook community for having voted me in and also the opportunity to serve on this board. It was something brought up a couple of years ago and I said this would be a wonderful thing to transition into, but unfortunately I may be transitioning completely out of the area. So it's just one of those decisions that was made and I want to plan as opposed to decision by fire. But I want to thank you all for the wonderful experience and thanks.
You will be missed.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Been a great time.
Thank you.
You'll be missed and good luck with where you're going.
Yeah.
Do we have to accept this resignation or is?
No.
He's not coming back?
You said yes earlier.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, we do have, under six would be the public comment. Is there any public comment on the agenda items?
Again, if there's anyone that wishes to make a public comment, you just need to raise your hand in the Zoom feature and then we will see you and bring you in, giving you permission to speak to the board or address the board. I am not seeing anybody, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. The, just going on, we're going to leave the next item and the next joint board meeting is January 26th and our next scheduled meeting is February 4th. And the deliberative session is February 4th as well. Our board meeting is going to be at 5:30 and that's prior to the.
So Mr. Chair, if I could.
Is that, is, is that an error?
If I can make a, a suggestion, this is how it's, it's been scheduled in the past. However, in the past couple of years, the board has decided to move it to February, a couple of weeks later because that is in two weeks from now.
Right.
Two weeks from tonight. So in the past, the board has moved that to February. So for this year, it'll be February 17th and then your next meeting after that is March 17th. So it would be exactly a month between both meetings. It would make sense.
Okay, that's my anniversary, but anyway, okay, you guys scheduled it. Okay, that's fine.
I have one question, Henry.
Yes.
Sorry, Mike. Caroline, is that enough time to get it on to the articles for the town meeting? Have to be approved and before it goes on?
Take over for a minute, please. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
That's something we can check on, right, Rhonda, as far as with matters?
Yeah, this isn't moving the deliberative session. The deliberative session would stay as scheduled.
I'm sorry, I missed that part. You're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the deliberative session would stay on the 4th at 7:00 PM in person at the high school, but the actual board meeting would be in four weeks.
Right.
Right.
Because by keeping the meeting on February 4th, that would be having a meeting in two weeks and then they would, the board would be looking at close to seven to eight weeks before they met again after the election, so.
We did the same thing with Seabrook.
Okay. Do that change?
Is that what you?
Yeah, I would, yes, please. And we'll just bring Henry a cake.
The new change, the new schedule, so I can make sure I have it.
So it'll be the 17th.
And I will send everybody a new calendar invite whenever I move that on the calendar, so you'll get all the notifications.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to, can I get a motion to go into non-public?
Do we need, I'll motion to go into non-public.
Yes, we do.
Here he is.
I'll make that motion if you want to go non-public session under RSA 91-a colon three subset, subsection A.
I'll second that.
Second that.
Or Tony will, whoever. And then we'll do a roll call.
Heidi?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Tony?
Yes.
Okay, the board is going into non-public session at 7:22 PM. I believe that you all received an email for the second Zoom meeting that will be held in non-public.
Right.
Is that correct, Dave?
Yes, the people on this panel have received an email invite. Leslie, can I ask, are we also inviting the staff member, staff members to non-public so I can make that happen?
That's, Henry, you're back on. Do you want to do that because it's regarding hers?
And that's, that's, it is. I'm just wondering how we can do that. I'm just trying to logistically, there is no problem because this deals with.
Recording?
Pardon?
I'm going to stop the recording now.
You have to, right?
Okay, I think they'll be rejoining us here momentarily. Here comes Leslie. Am I missing anybody? Oh, go again.
Henry.
And Tony, Henry is here. Let me bring him in. And so we're just wait, oh, no, Tony's camera's on. He's just not finished yet. Okay. Otherwise, I think we're all here. I did start the recording again.
So I make a motion, we come out of non-public.
I'll second.
Okay, Heidi Terrasina?
Here.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn?
Yes.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
Tony Delano? I'm going to mark Tony not present at vote. And meetings resumed at eight nineteen PM.
Here he is.
There's Tony. Tony, we just resumed regular meeting.
I'm not sure he has audio.
Hey, Tony. We have the regular meeting resumed now, Tony.
After further consideration of both letters received from Gabrielle Borden, we move to grant her an unpaid leave of absence per Article eleven of the CBA until either SAU ninety returns to full in-person instruction or WHS moves back to a full remote model, whichever occurs first.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Heidi Terrasina?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn?
Yes.
Mike Rabideau?
Yes.
And Tony Delano?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mike, do we have a motion for you?
Yes.
To adjourn?
I will, I'll make a motion to adjourn permanently. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, and best of luck. Don't be a stranger.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Rhonda, can we roll call to?
On a roll call for adjourn?
Yes, please.
Okay, Heidi?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Leslie? Leslie? Mike?
Yes.
And Tony?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-one PM.
Thank you all.
Thank you.